President.
Present.
Anne Hurst.
Present.
John LaFreniere is absent. Shane Ward Leighton.
Present.
Jennifer Palavan.
Present.
Robert Schwartz.
Present.
The mayor is absent. Superintendent.
Present.
Present. And also present from the school are Mark Hawke, Joyce West, and Dr. Gogan. Okay.
All rise for the.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda is the open time for the general public. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on for recognitions by the superintendent. There are none tonight, so we'll move forward to the consent agenda, which has the approval of the minutes from our June 10th meeting, the grant funds approval of over, what, 2.2 million, and then all of the warrants that have been added through the summer. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the subcommittee reports. Facilities Subcommittee, Mr. Schwartz.
Facilities Subcommittee met on September 4th. We were presented with multi-pages of work scheduled for the summer from the Maintenance Department of projects that are completed and/or in process. Some things to note is the, at the high school, 50-plus year public address system was replaced along with the battery-operated clocks, so now there are clocks that are all run and kept running with a master clock. Electrical services throughout this high school have been upgraded, and there's one major power switchboard that'll be installed in the summer of 2025. The kitchen, new acoustical tile was replaced as well as new lighting, and there were five prop cords, power cords, that were installed to remove any plugs that were on the floor of the kitchen, which really are not acceptable anymore because there might be a flood of water in the kitchen and the circuits could get shorted out. A new dishwasher and the kitchen exhaust hood is scheduled for the December break. Landry Auditorium is still in process. The HVAC upgrades are in process, as well as the theatrical upgrades. Those are scheduled for completion October 15. Main office, the floor tiles were removed and replaced with new VC tiles and a carpet. Nurses' office replaced the settle cast iron drainpipe that was in the hallway. Building the BMS upgrades, I believe those are the security upgrades, and the facilities explorer was still in process. Around the grounds, if you haven't noticed, there were areas that were previously dug up and I would say roughly repaired or paved over. Those have been repaved, as well as the connecting road with the high school and the middle school and within the area of the entrance to Watkins Fields. It's all new pavement. Good job. Middle school. Front doors and hardware are scheduled to be repaired, maybe with a completion date on or about October 18th. Generator repairs are scheduled, yet to be determined. If you remember, last year till our last meeting, there was a problem with the generator not working as well as the fuel system. It was determined, or thoughtfully determined, that there was a contaminated fuel in the tank. So those are scheduled to be put on schedule for our completion. Miscellaneous roof repairs. We're hiring a contractor to determine the extent of the repair required. There should be, or will be hopefully soon, submit a request to the MSBA for an emergency or accelerated repair program. Many rooms and offices, as well as the common areas at the middle school, were painted. Kitchen dishwasher, like the high school one, scheduled for the December break. Elm Street School, first floor. The installation of security cameras scheduled to be determined. In discussion, the replacement of the auditorium and the gym doors to provide added security to keep the first floor with more security. That's still in discussion. Elementary school, we're in the closeout period with the MSBA. We were issued a certificate of occupancy on 6/26/24. For the district, the GenTech Security and Access System upgrades, kindred replacement is scheduled, it's yet to be determined. That's all I have. Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Subcommittee report. The Finance Subcommittee met on Wednesday, September 4th. We went over the expense report. There were questions asked and answered about various line items. It's obviously the beginning of the new fiscal year, so there's not much movement yet. I inquired about some deficits in some of the salary lines, and it was noted that with the position, people moving within positions within the district, that the budget, from when the budget was created, that now that has to be adjusted. Oh, and we also talked about some other things, like the Zoom licenses and other things that we needed to address, and that was all. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? All right, moving on to the Policies Subcommittee. Mrs. Hurst.
We have a meeting on June 5th, and there's quite a few policies in the packet for you to look at. We have 11 for first read. And then we're meeting again this week, and this will be the first meeting of the year.
All right. Are you all set? Any questions, comments, concerns? All right, and the Student Advisory Board, we don't have a student yet assigned. We'll hopefully have one next month. Moving on to the discussion items, new business. Item number 3632, the first reading of the policies. Mrs. Hurst.
Okay, so, like I said, we have 11 for first read. We have AC nondiscrimination policy, BHE, use of electronic messaging by school committee members, EHA, district security relating to technology, EHB, data and record retention, GBE, personal use of technology, IJNDB, acceptable use of technology, IJOA-E, field trip approval, IJNDD, policy on staff use of social media, KDCV, district website and social media, KDD, news media relationships and news releases. As you can see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them that we are going to adopt. These are ones, policies that MASC has put out for us to, you know, look at, review, and adopt.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Moving on to item number, oh, I'm sorry, is there any questions or comments? Moving on to item number 3633, the second reading of the policies. Mrs. Hurst.
We have IJOA, field trips, JI, students' rights and responsibilities, GICFA, hazing, pro, yeah, privating of hazing, JICFA-E, hazing, JICH, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited, and JIE, pregnant students. I did not mention the IMGA because that's for adoption and should be done separately.
So is there a motion to accept the policies referenced by Mrs. Hurst?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Mrs. Ward Leighton. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. And then if you want to do, is there a motion for adoption of IMGA?
So move.
Motion made by Mrs. Ward Leighton, seconded by Mrs. Hurst. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote to accept the IMGA policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. And then I think there's one more for removal.
Yep, there's IGNDC, Internet Publication, and this is up for renewal. It's been found by MASC to be redundant and unnecessary, so I make a motion to remove IGNDC.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Mrs. Ward Leighton. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 3634, to ratify the contract between the Gardner School Committee and the Gardner Education Association. We'll vote on that one first. That's Unit A. Is there a motion to ratify the contract?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Hurst. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The Unit B contract is the Gardner School Committee, the agreement between the Gardner School Committee and the Gardner Educational Association, an affiliate of the Massachusetts Teachers Association for Educational Support Personnel. Is there a motion to ratify that contract? Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Mrs. Ward Leighton. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 3635, the MASC delegate. Is there anyone who would like to nominate a delegate for us?
Is there anyone who would like to do that? Bob, are you still willing to do that?
I've already submitted a paperwork.
Well, I guess we'll, I will motion for Bob to be the delegate. How's that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Mrs. Cormier, to appoint Mr. Schwartz as the MASC delegate. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 3636, the superintendent's goals.
So hi, folks. I'm going to be somewhat brief in my goals, only because what you're going to find is in the District Improvement Plan, which Dr. Gogan will present in a little bit, you'll find that my goals really align with the District Improvement Plan, which is really the way it should be. So as my first goal, we did a lot of work this summer creating a fidelity check, which is, which means to check to make sure that things are happening the way they're supposed to in our common planning times. The district negotiated just a few years ago to make sure we have enough common planning time in the different buildings, and we want to make sure that's being used with the most effective, in the most effective way. So one of the things that we have is when the common planning time happens, we want to make sure that they're holding fidelity to the curriculum that they have, and that they're sticking to the standards, they're working together, they're listening to their teacher leader, who's, those stipended positions that we pay for, to lead this, to lead this work, and discuss how they're going to design plans to not only have, to lay out what the lesson plans are for the week, but also to make sure that we're responding to data and we're making sure that we're supporting all of our students, specifically our students with special needs. And so that's really my first, my first goal. We do have an instructional priority in the district, which we worked with DESI on doing, and it's K through seven teachers, and by the way, I put K through seven specifically here, because the high school, believe it or not, doesn't have on, what they consider high-quality instructional materials, they don't have high school curriculum. So we're focused right now on the high-quality instructional materials that we purchased, you all purchased, for the district. We want to make sure that we're implementing them with fidelity and appropriately. So it's K through seven teachers. We'll implement high-quality instructional materials with fidelity and integrity to ensure students with disabilities have access to grade-level instruction and collaborative engagement with their peers. The collaborative engagement part, by the way, is really important to us because we believe that's one of the strongest levers, strongest supports for students with disabilities and English language learners. So we'd want to see that in every classroom. The second piece is we created a fidelity check for instructional practices. So we created a list of things that we want to see in the classroom that come from the common planning time that they designed. So the whole point is, we want to see it designed in the lesson, in the common planning time, and then implemented in the classes. And so we're looking for this year for 70% fidelity in common planning times throughout the districts, and 70% core academic classroom time instruction. All right? And just so you know, the high school and Gardner Academy are also working on this same goal. This is just the instructional priority we worked on with DESI specifically. And for student learning, the focus is to reduce the academic equity gaps, which we'll be measuring with a, with a new universal screener that happens three times a year in math and ELA, as well as our DIBELS. We're going to be looking at the differences for students who are multilingual or have special needs, and we want to see the difference between those two, and we want to reduce that difference from the first iteration of that universal screener to the last. We want to see a 10% reduction in that equity gap. And students in grades K through four, excuse me, will be reading on grade level. So we're looking for at least 75% of our students in grades K through four will meet or exceed grade-level reading standards as measured by DIBELS, which again, we do three times a year. And as is typical, we still have our wonderful relationship with Lynch Leadership Academy and that leadership pipeline grants, so I'll continue to do work with Lynch Leadership Academy, and by the way, they're embedded in just about everything we do. They're going to be working very closely with the middle school and a turnaround grant. They're going to be working throughout the district, supporting our administrators and coaches in terms of supporting learning in the classrooms. They're using our fidelity checks as well. So those are my goals.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pellegrino. Is there any questions or comments? Mrs. Ward Leighton?
Just a question. You mentioned for the student learning goal number one, that there was an additional universal screening? Or just DIBELS?
It's a new one. In the, in goal one?
Yeah.
Instructional practices for the district was built. Of core academic planning.
Yeah, no worries.
Student learning, all right. What's your question again, then?
What the new universal screener is, in addition to DIBELS.
Oh, it's STAR testing. We have math.
Okay.
And ELA.
Okay.
And we have that going all the way through grade seven.
And that's the three, that's also the three times a year in math and ELA?
Yes.
Gotcha. So it's that and DIBELS, three times a year?
Exactly. DIBELS for grades K through four specifically, because that's where they're learning to read. We really think that this is a huge step for us. We've been using Linkit for years. It just has not served our purposes in terms of responding to data. We get the data too late, they have too much control of the data, we don't have control. With STAR testing, the tests are only 20 minutes, which is a huge shift from Linkit, which was sometimes hours for those tests. So we're really excited to see how this works.
And is STAR, is that an acronym, or it's just the word STAR?
It's the word STAR.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, if you look it up, it actually hits all the criteria for DESI's standards.
All right, any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I did have a comment. I was at a IEP meeting in a different district for one of my students, and they were talking about Gardner, and, yeah, the good things that are happening here.
Oh, that's good to hear.
That aren't happening there yet. Yet. So, but, you know, it's really nice to hear people outside of, you know, Gardner talk about how, you know, the pluses of the district and those kinds of things. And they didn't know I was from Gardner either, so it's always a plus.
It's good to hear, thank you.
All right, moving on to item number 3637, the District Improvement Plan. Dr. Gogan.
Thank you. Well, my speech is getting shorter now. But I did want to start, I don't think we have this up on the screen, but I did just want to start by saying, the District Improvement Plan you're going to be seeing is brand-new. It's updated. When I say brand-new, I mean it's just updated for the next three years. The last one was from '21 to '24, and so you'll be looking at this for the first time. However, it's very similar to the old one that we just had, and we just updated it for where we finished with the last one, so I just kind of want to update you quickly on where we ended up with our last one. And so we had a couple of goals or actions that we're going to be taking this past school year from '23 to '24, and I wanted to let you know where we stand with those, and that we are picking up with this District Improvement Plan right where we left off. So by the end of June, there's only a couple of things that we were aiming for. Tier-two academic systems practices supports fully implemented. We ended up spending a lot more time on the tier-one process, so we haven't really started tier-two yet. So when you look at what he's got up on the board, what Dr. Pellegrino has up on the board right now, that's what we're planning to do now. So you can see that we're a little bit behind where we were hoping to be, but now that we know the reality of how long it takes to really do this work, I think this is the one that we have up here on the screen, is much more realistic in a timeframe. So we are planning to have an implementation of tier-one practices beginning this fall, and that's why the goals that Dr. Pellegrino has is really about maintaining and monitoring the fidelity of the practice of planning instruction and then implementing instruction so that we can move that work faster and really start to hone in on tiers two and three. The other thing we were talking about doing for June of 2024 was tier-three SEL systems practices supports being developed and implemented, and that is in different stages of implementation. Some schools are further along than other, and that's our social-emotional learning work that's being done, and they are starting to work on tier-three practices, but it's, like I said, it's at varying levels at each of the schools. Another thing that we were hoping to have completed by June was implementation and action plan for sustainability and fidelity of co-teaching practices for inclusive practices in the classroom. And we did have approximately four years of training at our elementary school, and we began some of that training at the middle and high school, and we did do that action planning at all schools by the end of June. And so we're not fully implemented, but we have partial to full implementation, depending on which school that is. And the last thing that we wanted to do by the end of June was assessing academic and SEL achievement and growth by grade level and by subgroups at least five times a year. We're not quite there yet, we're at three times a year, but our goal is to start monitoring that five times a year so we are able to switch gears and make changes as needed sooner rather than later. So like I said, we started right where we left off. If, Mark, if you wouldn't mind going to the very beginning of this presentation, scroll down till, we did add one section under the theory of action. We did not change the theory of action at all. We still believe that if we have a culture of dignity and inclusion for all students, we hold students to high expect, all people to high expectations. We collect, analyze, and respond to data regarding all of the work that we're doing. We provide teachers and staff members with the time and the training and the support needed to do this work, and we work together in collaboration with community members and families that we will have students that can achieve success. So that hasn't changed. Our district priority has narrowed in focus, and Dr. Pellegrino already read the district priority, so I won't read it again. But as you can see, there is a clear through line to what we're trying to do and to the, and to the superintendent's goals, and to the, so the district improvement plan then feeds into the school improvement plans, which are also being updated now, and so they'll start to present their updated improvement plans as well. So for the next three years, our action steps are really going to focus, a heavier focus on the academic. We spent the first, the first three years focusing on SEL, and we're still focusing on SEL, but we're now starting to take a much more active role in the implementation of the academic piece. So if you scroll down to the outcomes that we'd be looking for, we have three main outcomes that we're, or four, that we're looking for, and we broke them down into academics. We want to have tiers one, two, and three developed, and tiers one and two will be implemented as fully as possible so that we're ready to implement tier-three in year four, which is on this plan. We also want to make sure that we have 80% of our classrooms, at least 80% of our classrooms meeting, meeting the classroom support system practices, engaged and on task. And so that's been going on for. Joyce, is it two years now? This is year three of the CSS monitoring?
It's actually been probably closer to four.
Okay. So, and currently, we have teams of folks going in and monitoring these classroom support systems, and then asking, and then looking at that data, determining who would need tier-two services. So not only our students get tiered services, but also our staff do, and we provide the supports where they're needed in the time that they're needed. Again, Dr. Pellegrino's goals, we're talking about closing equity gaps. We are very focused on that, specifically with our students with disabilities, and so we're looking at those MCAS scores very closely and monitoring. We are seeing some reduction of those gaps, but not as quickly as we'd like. So there are some very specific goals around that. And then improving school climate and partnerships with families and community members. Really focusing on surveys, we are getting not as much participation in our surveys as we'd like, so we really want to focus on getting more participation. So we really are interested in hearing the feedback from our families and our community members so that we can make this a more positive experience for the children in our district. And then the last two pages are focused on the activities that we plan to do. So we have some things happening this fall that we're, that we're working on, establishing clear expectations for tier-one academic system structures and practices. We've already hit the ground running on that, and we're, we're well on our way. The elementary school has been our pilot school, so they're a little bit further than the other schools, but we have spent two days in August with our admins and our teacher leaders on the third day to practice and to, and to talk about what these expectations are, what does that look like in each school, and how does it, how does it get implemented throughout this school year? So that's well on its way. Structured common playing time, we have a very structured common planning time this year, along with those fidelity checks. The system for observing and monitoring those meetings, the common playing time meetings, is our fidelity check system, and we're in the process of getting that up and running now. The district's staff members will go and do the first fidelity checks and calibrate so that we are all speaking the same language and sending the same message at each of the schools as we support them. And then we purchased Open Architects, which is a data dashboard that takes all of the data we have, whether it's attendance data or behavioral data, absenteeism, graduation rates, whatever you can think of, and our academic data, and it creates separate, separate and combined dashboards that we can look at and. And it creates separate, separate and combined dashboards that we can look at and disaggregate by many different factors. We can, we can do it by subgroup, and we can do it by grades and clusters of, of age groups and so forth, so we can really dive in and see where the need is and how we're, and how we're making progress or not making progress, so we can action plan. So those are the things we're doing this fall. And um there's, there's more things, if you keep scrolling down. It seems like the fall is very ambitious, but we started this work in May to get ready for the fall of this year, so we are ready to do these things. A lot of these things are in place, and we're, and now we're just starting to implement them. Communication strategies. Uh, like I said, we're trying to get more voice and more participation on those surveys. Creating a metric for parent attendance. We're trying to figure out how do we measure when um families attend events that we have, so we can increase attendance and, and find activities and events that, that folks would like to join. And then we have um things that we want to have accomplished by June of twenty-five and twenty-six. And we don't, we have, um, we have forecasted out three years, but we think that, we know how long it takes to make this work happen and to do it well. So we know that some of these things that we said are going to happen in June twenty-five and twenty-six are really going to blend into twenty-six and twenty-seven. Questions on that? This is a first read, so there'll be a second read and a vote next month.
Any questions for Dr. Gogan? All right, thank you, Dr. Gogan.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to item number three, six, three, eight, the curriculum coordinator update. That is in your packet. Is there any questions, comments? Moving on to item number three, six, three, nine, the grants administrator update. That is just information in your packet. There's not a presentation for that tonight. That was a typo on the agenda. Is there any questions, comments regarding the grants administrators update? All right, moving on to item number three, six, four, zero, the special education update. That was also included in your packet. For information, is there anyone who has any questions, comments? All right, moving on to item number three, six, four, one, the CPAC update. That was also included within the um special education update. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? All right, moving on to communications.
Thank you, Lieutenant Piven. So I, I'm just excited to start another school year. This opening was very smooth. There were al- there were always little hiccups, always things that happened. But ultimately, this was a really nice opening. I was really pleased, by the way, that first off, we're starting off um with, with a contract for our staff. Coming to that fair contract is really important, and I think both sides, you know, it's, it's just wonderful to be able to, to kick this off with a welcome back event, which was newly negotiated, and teachers were thrilled to be there. I walked through some of those events and saw a lot of smiling faces, and I think it just starts things off right. I think it real, you know, relaxes folks, because they're able to see, this is going to be my child's teacher before the school year starts. What's the, what, what does it look like for, for this year? Who am I going to meet with? All of those things, I think, are really important, and I love the fact that we've, uh, that we have that now as our, as part of our kickoff. So things, I think, it was a very smooth opening. I'm very excited. And I just want to thank everyone for their hard work to make that happen, because that doesn't happen um by accident. And the work of my facilities, um folks was just unbelievable, uh, getting some of the work that they got done this year. Organizing those projects is huge. The undertaking at the high school auditorium and the HVAC system is a huge deal, and to get the electricity that we need so we can actually run the things that we want to run is, is wonderful for us. So I'm just really excited to start this school year. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pellegrino. Uh, moving on to the final comments of the school committee, uh, Mrs. Ward-Latenin.
Awesome. Well, welcome, welcome back, everyone, and um I, I wanted to echo what Dr. Pellegrino said about the welcome back events. I had two kiddos moving from elementary and middle into middle and high school, and the anxiety was so real. And they uh, they were really happy that they had a chance to go into the school, meet their teachers, and they knew kind of where everything was going to lay before the first day of school. And I know that is this, this is the first year we've ever done it before school, right?
Before school.
Yeah. And um I know that there are other districts that do it. The district I work in does it as well, and it's, it's just really helpful, and it's also good for the teachers to kind of make that initial connection with the parents. It's very much a clean slate kind of feeling. It's like a, like a, like a soft opening for the school, you know? So that was, I think that's a great addition to our practices. And other than that, just thank you to, you know, all the district staff and folks that put together the packet. Even though she's not here, thank you Courtney for the two million dollars worth of grant information. Super, almost three million, actually. No, it's two million. But just thank you for the detail, and especially with the improvement plan, Dr. Gogan and Dr. Pellegrino. It's so nice and detailed, and the teacher brain in me was just very, was loving it, so.
I like the color coding.
Huh?
I like our color coding.
You know what? I'm, I'm, I'm there for color coding. But other than that, just really happy to see everybody and um get started for the year. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hearst.
Welcome back, everybody. I hope everybody had a good summer, and um I'm always proud to listen to the presentations and what's happening in the, in the schools. You know, when you're a parent and you have kids in school, a lot of your focus is, you know, you're on that child, and you don't see the bigger picture. But it's, it's great to see the bigger picture and to know that there's some really good work going on. I did want to mention that September is National Su- Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and tomorrow, September tenth, is World Suicide Prevention Day. This, um, the uh theme for this year is I Won't Be Silent. Uh, it's raising the national conversation on youth suicide prevention. And so suicide is a national health problem and currently ranks as the second-leading cause of death for ages ten through forty-four. We lose an average of more than a hundred and twenty-five young people each week. The uh, yeah. The Jason Foundation, which you can find online, just Google it, has come up with a new app. It's called Ask a Friend. It's a free app o- on your phone that provides information, tools, and resources so that a, a student could help their friend or themselves. Anybody who's struggling with lots of suicide. We can't not think that this doesn't happen here, because it does. And then again, the uh Suicide Crisis Line, you can just text nine-eight-eight, and they'll put you in touch with, with, with resources. So that is all I have to.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hearst. Mr. Schwartz?
Again, welcome, beginning of a new school year. I think I'm going to throw out a hand grenade. As we all know, I hope we know, I wish the school committee is adopting their union resolution to drop M C A S for a graduation requirement. I'm just wondering if we should create a discussion on whether we want to do that as well. I think, and I'm not sure, but I think it's going to be a question on the November ballot. I'm not sure. I'll do some further research on that. But I just want to throw something out there for us to think about and possibly discuss a little way down the road. I see some drawbacks on removing that requirement. I, I would say that there would be many students, I know they get frustrated and, and go through a lot of angst and, and passing, or passing, trying to pass the M C A S. But I think that if it's eliminated from the graduation requirement, I don't think it'll be as stressful, or they'll just not fluff it off, but probably won't try as hard to pass. That's only my thought. I have no input information on that, just my feeling. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Mrs. Cormier?
I'm just happy for what everybody else says. Nice to be back, and I'm looking forward to another year. Just keep getting better.
All right, thank you so much. Um, we have no need for an executive session tonight. We are, um, all we have is an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Ward-Latenin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.